I'd like to call this regular Board of Selectmen meeting for order on May 1st at 7:00. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to amend the agenda to add discussion of lease agreements pursuant to CGS 1-206D to our executive session? Mike moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Terrific. Okay. May I have a motion to go into executive session for discussion of lease agreements pursuant to CGS 1-206D and for personnel interviews pursuant to CGS Section 1-206A? Marcy moves. Yep. Mike seconds. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Thank you, 79. May I have a motion to return to regular session? Sarah moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Terrific. Okay. Next item up is First Selectmen's report. So first, I want to thank all of the Scouts and the Green Team volunteers and Kate, Karen, and Linda, and my friend Mike Burke for standing out in the rain with us for over two hours.
And Marley.
And Marley. Handing out trees and shrubs. We had 400 plants donated by Eversource, and we distributed 399 of them on Saturday. And the last plant was handed out at a Scout ceremony on Sunday. Which brings me to my next point. I had the honor of being at that Scout ceremony where Cameron McGraw, Owen Miller, Connor Russo, and Gregory Saba became Eagle Scouts. And each one of these completing an Eagle Scout project in town that I'm sure will have a positive impact on our community for many years. So we had the Scouts working with the trees, which will last for many years, and projects in town that will last for many years. So my appreciation and congratulations to each of them. The Community Fund of Darien held its 44th Annual Volunteer Week or Volunteer Day last week, and I had the pleasure of seeing some of Darien's finest volunteers receive public acknowledgement of their hard work and their dedication to a great variety of causes. That was really nice. The Hindley Homes and Royal Building Committee is looking for two additional members. So desired expertise could include general knowledge of construction management, specific building expertise in any of the relevant trades or areas such as building, construction, mechanicals, electrical, things like that. The time commitment is likely to be one to two evenings and one to two day meetings per month with additional meeting materials review and general communication needed as time goes on. So construction is slated for completion by the fall of 2025, right? And so please consider applying. I like that. Applying and forward your application to linda@lolearydarienct.gov. Next week on May 11th, the Public Works Department will be holding a meeting in Town Hall downstairs at 7:00 to go over the Salt Box Lane Drainage Study. So this drainage study area includes Seagate Road, Post Road near Seagate and Salt Box, Salt Box Lane, Salt Box Lane East, Coach Lamp Lane, Thomasina Lane, and Pleasant Street. The public meeting will address this specific drainage study only. That's what the focus will be. There are other drainage studies in progress, but they will not be part of that particular meeting.
What time is that?
That's at 7:00 in the auditorium. And Ty and Bond will be there giving a presentation. The deadline for accepting Great Island Advisory Committee applications has passed, and the interview process is beginning. We are very fortunate to have so many people that are willing to step forth and work on this committee, and I'm confident that we will find the four resident volunteers with the skills necessary to get right to work on this committee. And speaking of deadlines, this Friday, May 5th, is the Great Island closing, and I want to just give a reminder to residents that after May 5th, the property will not be open until the public, until notified. So I will have more to say on that after the closing. So those are my comments. Kate, do we have anything to report?
Yeah, continuing to work on the website upgrade. I'm very excited about, you know, what we can see there. And also working on the auditorium AV upgrade and working with IT on the results of a cybersecurity audit done by the state. So there's a lot going on. Pardon our appearance as we are painting. And before the meeting, I think it was Mike asked me when was the last time we'd done it? I don't think it's ever been done.
Really?
I think that the wallpaper was from when the building was opened. So certainly has not been painted in the time I've been here, and that's 23 years.
Way to amortize.
Yeah. We will be doing the first four as well after the, you know, probably over the summer. And then the other thing I want to say is tomorrow in the morning, department heads and assistant department heads, supervisors, will be having off-site training. We'll be down at the Paddle Hut. We do this twice a year. And we'll be focusing on some financial processes, getting people familiar with certain things that they need to do, a little refresher, and then doing some human resource, some personnel work about having difficult conversations with employees. So just a little training for the staff and a little bit of team building as well.
Okay. Next, we'll do Board Liaison Reports. Mike?
The Blake Review Board will meet on May 10th, so we have nothing to go to report on until then. I will say, you may want to talk about the Great Pickleball Challenge that will be coming up on the 13th if you want to come and see some of your favorite town servants battle each other at Cherry Lawn.
You would get that out there.
Yeah.
Mike is our captain, so.
I wasn't going to get that out there.
He's our fearless leader, and yeah, we're psyched. Thank you to Jim Palin for putting that together.
Thousand percent.
Sarah?
So the Thriving Youth Task Force, I have a repeat from last meeting. On May 10th at 7:00 PM, Middle Sex Parent Association along with Darien High School Parent Association, YWCA Parent Awareness, and Thriving Youth are working together, and they're hosting Dr. Lisa Demore and featuring her new book, The Emotional Lives of Teenagers. Please join them, and they're looking forward to seeing everyone. Her book is available at Barrett, and 20% of the proceeds will benefit the Middle Sex Parent Association. The next meeting for the Thriving Youth Task Force is May 19th. For Hindley Homes and Royal Building Committee, thank you. We do need two additional folks. We appreciate it. We have had some delay with our work, and we have to push back some of the work and the bidding schedule. And it is an unfortunate piece, but there's been a lot of additional work that's been involved. Some of it's mechanical strategy, and when they've gone and looked at different rooms, if they've had to take down possible ceiling tiles in one room, if they're going to take down 18 or 20, they're not going to only put up 18 or 20 new ones, they'll, you know, put up if they're sturdy total. So that may be part of it. There's some new IT and data requirements from the schools along with security requirements. There's some additional things that were added from the state when the state reviewed the documents, and the town when planning zoning reviewed the documents. So there has been some additional work that has come in. Right now, things are being pushed back about a month. The bidding being pushed back about a month. The previous date for Hindley and Royal was April 28th, and now they're looking at about May 30th. And Homes was looking at May 5th, and now they're looking at June 8th. So we do need to have the construction team design another set of drawings, which will result in some additional costs that the committee approved. The committee last met on the 27th. We do not have the next meeting date yet, but we will be working. They're planning on making up as much of the work as they can. They're planning on having six-day work weeks. It's going to be a very tight timeline. They're still having the idea that they're going to be finished by the fall of '25, but it is moving targets slightly, so they're trying to figure out how they can make up the time.
Sarah, when are the design drawings due?
I don't know that I have that date, but they have to get them in, I think, another three weeks. Do you know if that's accurate? Sorry, David Martin is in the audience.
My understanding is that Hindley and Royal were due this week. Homes, the drawings will be due next week.
Next week, okay.
It'll take them about two and a half weeks for the estimators at ONGAP to reestimate what the costs will be for the final designs, and then they will go out to bid with bids being due in mid-July. One of the primary rationale.
David, if you're going to, just for the camera, it's really hard for people to follow.
Sorry.
So could you just give a brief what you just said, so that...
Okay. So my understanding is that the Hindley and Royal drawings are due this week, and Homes is due next week. It'll take ONGAP approximately two and a half weeks to update estimates for what they believe things are going to cost, and then they go to bid, and they expect the bids to be in. There's a date.
July 26th, I think?
Yeah, something like, July 26th, I think, sounds about right, where all of the bids are in. And the concept here is they were concerned that if they went to bid with the existing documents, that there would be a whole lot of change orders in the process later, and that can open up a whole can of worms for cost overruns and things. So they wanted to get a more final set of drawings to minimize the potential for that type of thing.
Thank you, Dave. And we don't have a date yet for the next meeting, but we are looking into the deadlines we need to approve things, so.
Right.
That's where we stand.
Okay.
Thank you. And we appreciate you joining last week.
Yeah, it was very informative. John, you're good?
Well, the IT committee has wrapped up its work. I did have a chance to speak with the Coastal Advisory Commission, although I'm not serving on that board or working with them directly, but it was a good discussion. They're very interested in trying to support the Great Island effort, given their knowledge and perspective about coastal waters, and so there's a lot of expertise on that committee. And so we definitely should try to loop them in as an adjunct or certainly connect them with the Great Island Commission when the time comes for that. It was a good reminder, sitting with them, that as a board, we should take stock of all the committees and commissions that are established to provide advice to this board, because regular outreach to them will help them keep their agendas fresh, help them know kind of what our questions are, because there's really no reason for an advisory commission to exist unless we've got something we need them to do to help us with. And so I'd certainly like to help those volunteers get more connected with this board so that we know what they're doing and they know what they need from us. So anyway, it was a real positive discussion.
I think that's true. You know, the sustainability advisory, another group that is looking for feedback from us. So maybe what we should be doing is having these groups come in and give a presentation. I know Coastal's done that in the past.
They've done, and they will be before this board soon to present some revised Harbor Master rules. So the Harbor Master is sort of ex officio to that commission, and they're going to work with John to finalize and refine those suggestions, and then the commission with John is going to come to this board and present that. And that's soonish. I don't have a date for that yet. I was waiting for them to have a chance to meet, to do that work before they come to us, but I'll keep you apprised of that.
Yeah, the sooner that, you know.
Well, we're in voting season, so absolutely.
Right, yeah.
So definitely on the list. I'll talk to John this week.
Okay.
And then the only other thing is we talked about resurrecting the ARPA committee.
I forgot the meeting last week.
What's that?
I forgot the meeting last week, and or two weeks ago, and it happened.
Oh, yeah, well, we've talked about it, and I haven't had a chance to talk to you about it, to do that, so.
It's done.
Yeah, it's done.
Oh, fine.
Yeah, but we do, we need, Chairman of FNB knows, and the Chairman of Finance Board know that we need new members from them.
Fine, okay.
Oxford Building Committee met last week Thursday. We are in the home stretch of that school. We've got about four months until it's complete, and it's just turned into this absolutely beautiful project. It continues to be slightly below budget, which is great news, on time as a project, which is great news. Hopefully, our kids will be back into school for September 1, and the project should be 100% at that point. So things are going really well there. Very busy over at Mental Health Task Force. We had quite a few meetings last week. We had the entire commission meet together and sort of got together and are trying to put together more of a calendar that could showcase what so many different committees and organizations are doing in town to sort of combat the mental health issues that we have in town. So at that meeting, we decided that we would start to post current events and calendar events on our website. So now if you go to the Darien Town website, you can go into the Mental Health Task Force little tab, and under there, you'll see calendar events that currently are being sponsored by the town. Right on there, you can click on it, you can register right from there directly, which I think is a little bit more efficient way to try to find engagement that's happening. This weekend, I participated in the high school community walk, the AFSP walk. It was absolutely breathtaking, I would say. There was over 400 kids that attended, just all dressed and, you know, their Blue Wave gear, just really celebrating the town, and beautiful speakers. It was completely run by students. They had lots of little talks and poetry that they had read, and really sort of opened up to the year that they've had. And it was really kind of brought me back in a moment to realize that this has really been a very difficult time for our community, and these kids are really healing in a way. They were together, they walked, there was a lot of hugs, there was a lot of tears, there was a lot of just reflecting, and I think it brought a really positive vibe to the town. They raised almost over $30,000 for the American Code of Health. Sorry, this is choking up for me, for the organization, and I just am incredibly grateful for the support and for what everybody has done for this town through this healing process. So thank you for that. In regards to, they have some training coming up in the end of May. Again, the dates and the registration will be on for the mental health training. It's great. It's a two-day program. They'll be doing it down at the Darien Deep, no, Post 53. We are thankful of them hosting. It's during the day. It's really great. It's a way to sort of identify if somebody is in a mental health issue at the time and to really find the right services to give them at a moment. So things are good. There is a program that is going to be on Thursday night. It is going to be via Zoom. It is a resiliency training program, a resiliency program for school-aged children ranging from kindergarten all the way up to high school and college age. You can again get the information on our website. You can register, log in, and a lot of organizations will be sort of giving some information on how we can help build some resiliency in some of our kids. So, good stuff.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have public comment.
Dan Guller, Ten Walmsley Road, speaking on behalf of Darien Pride. It's a busy spring. We had a great fundraiser. We've got a community conversation with Jax, a drag queen from RuPaul's Drag Race who grew up here in Darien and is coming back to town to perform and give us a talk about growing up in town. We're calling it Homecoming Queen. And then we have our major event, June 11th, in Tilly Pond Park. We are going for it again. We're going to hope that the weather will be kinder to us this time, and we'll be able to actually do it in the park. But we do have a backup ready this time as opposed to scrambling next time. If we have to, we'll be back at First Congregational, but hopefully, we won't need to. And we've been waiting with interest for the results of the Thriving Youth Task Force survey that should be released soon, but I don't think it would be a surprise if it said that our kids are struggling, especially the 7% to 9% of kids who would self-identify as LGBTQ+ if Darien is in line with the national average, which I think we can assume that it is. And a statistic from the Trevor Project said that a queer youth that has at least one accepting adult in their lives is 40% less likely to attempt suicide, which is an astounding number. Just one caring adult can make such a huge difference. And for LGBTQ+ kids who may not have that adult in their lives, Darien Pride is committed to being that adult or those adults, and I would like to think that we would all do the same thing. And so to that end, I'm here tonight to ask that the Board of Selectmen issue a proclamation declaring June to be Pride Month in Darien. We have worked up a draft proclamation, which I'll read a part of now. Whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community has made significant contributions to our town and continues to play an important role in our community, and whereas the month of June has been recognized as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in cities and towns across the country commemorating the historic Stonewall riots in New York City, which served as a turning point for the LGBTQ+ rights movement, and whereas it is vital for the mental health of our LGBTQ+ youth that their hometown of Darien supports them and welcomes them, and whereas Pride Month is an occasion for all of us to show support for LGBTQ+ individuals and to promote the values of diversity, acceptance, and inclusion, now therefore, I, Monica McNally for Selectmen, along with the Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Darien and urge all residents to join me in celebrating and promoting the rights, dignity, and equality of all individuals regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, and witness whereof, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I can leave this with you and look forward to further discussion.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm David Martin, 15, Libby Lane. You know, I'm a longtime resident of Darien, and I believe that the town and the citizens of this town value tolerance and inclusion, and we want everyone who lives here or visits here to feel welcome and accepted. And with all of the vitriol and anger that we see and hear and read about in the national press, it's targeted towards the LGBTQ community, wouldn't it be the right thing to issue a proclamation of acceptance and inclusion so that the LGBT community here and those who choose to visit will feel welcome and accepted? And I urge you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Kate, do we have anything?
Nothing by you.
No? Okay. Okay, thank you for your comments. Next item on the agenda is discuss and take action on a request to authorize a refunding of up to $119,705,000 of town's outstanding bonds. Kate, you're going to go with this?
Yeah, sure. This is something we do every year. It allows us to be ready to move quickly to take advantage of any refunding opportunities should they arise. We anticipate that our TM will approve it next week. There are no plans right now to do any refinancing, but this just puts us in position to be able to move quickly if the opportunities do arise.
So Kate, I had one question. So I just was catching on the signatures, that sometimes we need three signatures, sometimes we need two people, sometimes one person. Is this like just...
You mean on the various documents?
Right.
Yeah, it depends on what the documents are.
And that's just standard? That's what we've been doing? Okay. Okay. And we don't have anything lined up at this time, right?
No, not to my knowledge.
All right. Any other questions for Kate?
What was the amount last year? Do we know?
No, I don't know, but we usually look at what our possible maximum would be.
Uses, yeah.
Yeah.
We've done this every year for years.
We've done this every year for years, yeah.
Just gives the board capacity to act on this whenever they come across.
Yeah, if you listen to, you know, the speech that Jack usually gives, we did lose an opportunity to refund once because it takes so long to go from here to there to there. So this puts us ready to go when the opportunities arise.
Any other questions?
Yep.
No? Okay. May I have a motion to authorize the refunding of up to $119,705,000 of the town's outstanding bonds? John moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, terrific. Okay, next item is to discuss and take action on a request to authorize the First Selectmen to sign the local bridge program application and any associated agreements.
So the Hanson Road Bridge, which needs repairs, is eligible for, and included some information in your packets about this, it's eligible for the state's local bridge grant program. It is not eligible for the federal program, which does fund at a higher level, but this bridge is not wide enough to be considered for the federal program. So what this is doing right now, we're going to get in the queue and hopefully be approved. There's a lot of work that has to be done, but the First Selectmen needs to be authorized to sign all the agreements, and that's actually a state requirement. It's not our local requirement. So what we're asking you to do tonight is to authorize the First Selectmen to sign the agreements.
So Kate, are we going in under the emergency?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, and I did discuss it, you know, it's a possibility, but right now, I don't believe we are.
So are we...
He monitors the bridge on a regular basis to see if we need to move it up, but right now, we're working on the designs and the specs.
Okay. So it's not a timing thing on the emergency? There's no...
We do have to file for the, the preliminary application has to be filed by May 31st.
Right. Okay.
Whether it's an emergency or not because of the state's funding cycle.
And have we ever gotten a local bridge grant?
I don't know.
Okay. So what happens if we apply, and I'm guessing it's an annual?
Mm-hmm.
So if we are, if we're rejected, or we're not, they don't have the funding, do we stay in the queue for the following?
I know, I think we'd have to be applying. But, you know, the thing is, we need to repair the bridge.
We need to do it.
I don't think we have the luxury of waiting. I mean, we're going to have to appropriate the full amount of the cost regardless of whether or not we get the grant. It would simply be, the grant would be a revenue source in addition to taxes or running.
And he has a pretty big spread here, like, I think it's 1.2 to 1.5 maybe? Right?
Yeah.
So when he writes the, when he writes the application...
He'll go for the max.
He'll go for the max, okay. Okay, so we'll appropriate the max?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other questions on this? No? Okay. Marcy, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So may I have a motion to authorize the First Selectmen to sign the local bridge program application and any associated agreements between the state of Connecticut and the town of Darien for the Hanson Road Bridge, which is Bridge Number 035005. Marcy moves?
Yeah.
Marcy moves. John seconds. All in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. Okay, next item is to discuss and take action on a request for special appropriation of $2,640,000 for the transfer out to other funds and to recommend the same to the RTM.
This is a board of financing. This is how, one of the ways in which they're funding the capital program for fiscal '24 is through a fund balance contribution in addition to the taxes that will be levied for. So this has to happen in order to fund it.
Where does that leave fund balance as a percentage of budgeted revenues?
I don't know that number, but I believe we're in very good shape. I know that, I heard them talking about it, but I can't recall what the number was.
I'd be interested in just taking a look and see what that, I'll call Jim and ask him that. I'd be interested. We looked at that for years trying to get that number right, and it floated up, what was the high on that, the mid-20s somewhere? 26, 27%? It was a big number.
After I left finance, I stopped following the exact percentages, so.
So, well, touche, so did I. So, well, touche, so did I. Time to put the old hat on. I'll go take a look. I'm just interested to see how that's trended.
I think the important thing is we are meeting our fund balance policy, so we're not going below it.
Yeah, I do remember that policy, so I will check that. Okay, thank you.
Do you need that answer to vote on this?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. So may I have a motion to request a special appropriation of $2,640,000 for transfer out to other funds and to recommend the same to the representative town meeting? John moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, next item is reappoint of Severio Bocuzzi, Bocuzzi...
Bocuzzi.
Bocuzzi as a constable for the Tokone Police Department for a term ending June 30th of 2025. Do we have any discussion on this? No? Okay. May I have a motion to reappoint Severio Bocuzzi as a constable for the Tokone Police Department for a term ending June 30th, 2025? Marcy moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. Okay, next item up is the minutes of the April 18th, 2023 regular meeting. Are there any edits, deletions, omissions? Nope. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Mike moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Excellent. Unanimous. All right. Any topics board members would like to see on a future agenda?
Yes, in light of the public comment, maybe a timely consideration of the proposal for a proclamation that's reflected and submitted.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mike moves. Sarah seconds. Unanimous.